Hey, I would like to call the May 27th, 2020 budget to order at 5:07 PM. For the record, will everyone who's present, please state your name. We'll start over here.
Zach French Deckers.
Hello.
Carolyn Stelter.
John Langton.
John Daniels.
Tim Keely.
Thank you. I would like to turn the budget committee meeting over to Mr. Tim Keely at this moment.
Thank you, Mr. Williams. Tonight, we'll be taking our first look at the tentative fiscal year 2021 budget parameters. We're going to start by doing a brief analysis of our financials year to date, and it's as of April 30th. Feel free to ask questions as we get through each section. So when we get through the fiscal year to date analysis, I'll take questions. So moving through your slides, we're going to look at our revenue first. There's a year-to-date revenue dashboard and provided the board with kind of a snapshot where we were same time last year. And as you can see, our actual year-to-date revenues so far, we're lagging about 2% behind overall. Looking at the local revenues, we're slightly behind. We can attribute that to a bit of a lag in student fees during, due to the current uncertainty of all things related to the COVID pandemic. And then when we look at the state sources, we're about 4.5% behind. When we delve into that, we look at some different items where we'd be expecting some revenue from the state from food service sales that haven't occurred since school was shut down, as well as a reduction of transportation reimbursement attributable to the fiscal year 19 transportation invoices, you may recall from our prior contractor that were held over into the current fiscal year. So they were not reported to the state on that reimbursement claim. They'll be coming on the future one. So we're a little bit short on this year's transportation reimbursement, and we'll see those funds come through on next year's. When we, again, when we look overall at our local sources, we're slightly better than we were this time last year. And then with state sources, we're about 2% behind the same timeframe as last year. And again, attributed to slight reduction in food service revenue, as well as the reduced transportation plan funds. Look at the expenditure dashboard. Again, we've done the same thing, provide you with a snapshot of where we were same period to date last year compared to the end of April 2020. Our total expenses, we anticipated, based on our prior five-year trends, to be about 72% expended. You can see we're at 75%. That's a significant increase, but we attribute that to the fact that our summer 2020 construction, which is somewhere in the neighborhood of $10 million worth of work, is slightly ahead of schedule, although our construction manager won't admit it because there are uncertainties with some of the equipment on order, et cetera. The construction crews were able to get going a little bit earlier this year than anticipated. And so we're about a month ahead in terms of expenditures. So we'll see a little bit heavier expenditures in the current fiscal year for capital improvements versus the 21 budget portion for the post-July 1st work. For salaries and benefits, we're very close. We're about 0.3 over. Same time last year, we're about 1.7 over. And then again, for other objects, we're about 9% ahead of where we anticipate. And all of that construction, whether it be the construction manager professional fees, architect professional fees, or the general contractor expenditures, those are all a portion of that number. Same time last year, we're about 6% ahead. So again, about 3% effective difference between this period this year and same period last year. The next chart you are familiar with, it shows our fund balance as it trends throughout the year. You see our high point in September of each year, and then we hit the low point in May, right before we get our June property taxes. So this is showing that difference. Of course, this year, the budget does call for deficit spending, primarily due to the capital improvements, and you can see the fund balance trending slightly lower than last year. The next two charts show the fund balance, the first one in relation to monthly expenditures and revenues. As you can see, again, we reference back to the prior chart, you see that we're in kind of a downturn in terms of our fund balance. That is typical based on our property tax cycle. So again, you see about 5.3 million expenditures versus 1.7 in revenues. But we really look at this more on an annual basis. And again, the 1.2 million in capital projects is significantly higher than what we would expect, but that is due to work being completed in advance of what we anticipate. And the next sheet just shows year-to-date, all revenues, all expenditures. Again, we expended about 13 million more than revenues with the anticipation of the first portion of our property tax coming in June. Next, we have the aggregate financial forecast based on months to date in the fiscal year through April 30th. It shows essentially a breakdown of what our annual forecast was based on trends in our current spend, as well as putting it next to our annual budget. And as you can see on the revenue side, again, we're lagging a little bit behind on local. And then state also attributed to that, the categorical payments for transportation. And as far as federal's concerned, with the time that we set the budget, we generally don't have all the federal figures in those, in many cases, flow through. So while we're behind on the revenue on federal, we are in a similar position as far as federally funded expenditures. When you look down at the expenditures, you'll see that we are underspending on supplies. And then we're tracking a little bit higher on purchase services. That would be our construction manager and architect fees, mostly for the 2020 construction work. And then on capital outlay, we're about 1.7 million ahead of where we expected the budget to be. But then again, that will show up as a reduction in the future fiscal year, as far as 2020 work expenditures concerned. Are there any questions about our fiscal year-to-date figures? Again, these are subject to change. We're going to get into discussions on the 2021 budget parameters. A whole lot of that is subject to change based on what we're learning every day about state and federal funding. Here are no questions from the committee. I'll move on to our fiscal year 21 budget parameters. This would typically be our second budget committee meeting, but due to the shutdown, we did have to cancel our first meeting. So this is really the first chance for the committee to look at these figures. And from a personal standpoint, reflecting on this work, I am kind of glad that we haven't had that first meeting yet because so much has changed and so much will change even before we put the tender budget before the board next month. The biggest factor that is going to play into our long-term forecast is the consumer price index. This year, for the fiscal year 21, our revenue is going to be based on that December 2018 12-month CPI figure, which was 2.3. That's the highest we've seen in quite some time. We've had an average of about 1.8 over the last 10 years. So that was very favorable. Unfortunately, the last two months of consumer price figures have been negative. And we're waiting for the May numbers to come out on June 10th, and we'll keep monitoring that. So we expect to change that fiscal year 22 number of 0% accordingly. Our hope is certainly that the economy does recover, but we're taking a conservative approach based on the information we have before us. For the out-years in fiscal year 23 and 24, we've moved this back up to 1.5% in anticipation of some economic recovery, and then back to 2% in fiscal year 25. There have been ongoing discussions with our peer CSBOs in DuPage County, and I do feel like we are on the conservative end, but not by a whole lot. There's not a whole lot of good news as far as CPI is concerned. So as everyone remembers, that CPI is what drives, you know, drives a big portion of our revenue. So there are significant changes in our financial forecast based on how that ends up. For state funding, as I alluded to, we are very concerned about the stability of the evidence-based funding model. Even prior to the COVID crisis, the model was predicated on state funding. There was never a guarantee. There was, in the law, there's a whole harmless, but that still isn't a guarantee that we're going to continue getting the base funding. Each year, we were planning on about $300,000 or more of additional tier funding as we move towards what they call adequate funding. And we've received word that we should not expect that in the coming year. And I will tell you that about two weeks ago, the talk from Springfield was there was a potential that we'd have a pullback of about that much. So looking at a potential annual reduction of our evidence-based funding of about 300,000. That does not appear to be the case, but we will continue monitoring that as we move forward. That assumption is baked into our forecast and does have a significant impact over the next five years. We are anticipating CARES funding, that's listed there in your sheet, and we're working, Ms. Cartman is working with our non-public schools that educate the Addison School District for resident students to work through that application process as a portion of those funds potentially will flow to those schools. For now, we have a placeholder for it. My thought is that by the time we bring a final budget to the board in September, we'll have a very good idea on that. We may have a more clear picture in June for the tender budget, but for now, again, we have a placeholder. We're looking at categorical payments at 100%. And when I say that, that's actually, we're getting, you know, two from last year and two from this year, as we have the past couple of years. And for federal funding, we're keeping it flat, and we're going to do that on both the revenue and expenditure side for the tender budget. And then as those grant applications are approved and we get a clearer picture on that funding, as well as any carryover numbers, we will adjust accordingly. But as I stated earlier in the meeting, a lot of that really is offset by expenditures. If we look at our assumptions for expenditures, as we all know, we are a collective bargaining agreement that was ratified in the past year here. And so we're looking at 4% annual growth for the salaries.
Can I ask a question in the revenue area?
Absolutely.
Okay, good. Just in terms, okay, so if we were to just estimate how much of the money right now of our revenue comes from the state? I know we have very little in federal, and I know most of it's property tax, but in terms of the state, how, what percent? 30%?
It depends on the year, but it can be as much as 30%, so.
From memory, it's somewhere in there. And then the next payment would be sometime, so the fiscal year is June 30th. So we, I guess what I'm getting at is at what point do we feel that the state, just like what happened in 2008, where they would just, they didn't give us the money that we were supposed to get? What, you get what my question's leading to, like, at what point do we need to start being concerned about that percentage of money because it's going to happen? They're only going to give us 80%, 85%, 90% of that money. At what point do we need to start thinking about how lack of revenue coming in?
That's a great question, and at this point, we don't have any indication that that there will be a reduction of the evidence-based money?
What happened in 2008 was it wasn't a reduction, they just didn't make full payments. They said, okay, we're going to owe you money, we're going to get that to you. And then over the course of time, we had to make adjustments based on, I mean, we did have the fund balance, but, you know, and eventually we got some of the money back.
Yeah, and the state is still significantly prorating categorical payments. For instance, when we have our conversations about transportation reimbursement, you know, in some cases, if you look at our total spend on transportation for regular ed expenditures, we're getting single-digit reimbursement from the state. If you look back a decade, we're probably getting close to 80%. On special education, the understanding was always that that would be 100% funded by the state. And now we're getting, last year it was 65%. So it was 80%, and that was prorated again, a further 84%. So, you know, that's something we have to keep an eye on because our EDF money is the lion's share of our state funding. I have not heard anything yet about the state prorating that, but everything kind of hangs in the balance really with that state budget. It's unfortunate that the state has this history of prorating, so your question is quite valid. Until we have further guidance on that, we're going to plan on getting our base funding, and those come in installments throughout the year. So we'll continue to monitor that. And again, if adjustments have to be made, it'll be made in the final budget in September. So again, we've got our salaries there. You see the figures that we're using. Those are consistent with the current collective bargaining agreement. With our benefits, with our health insurance, we're looking at about a 6% increase based on our renewal over last year. And then with our dental insurance, with our recent plan change, we see a slight uptake above our normal. And we're seeing about 10% increase beyond next year. We're looking at a 6% health insurance increase and a 5% on dental. For the ed fund, we are looking at a 3% increase across the board with some adjustments being made, certainly in the curriculum department, based on needs there, whether it be digital curriculum, textbooks, et cetera, as well as for student technology. There's so much uncertainty right now for next year and what that's going to look like. So we certainly have to be as conservative as possible when we budget the education fund. And, you know, as an administration, we stand ready to make adjustments based on the budget committee's direction as we move forward. For the transportation fund, due to the shutdown, we have, you know, obviously, some services that weren't rendered. So we're looking at a one-time reduction for both regular ed and special ed. That's listed there in your packet, and those are conservative figures. That's not an exact, what we do is we look at essentially what our daily billing rate is, and then I'll take about 90% of that, and we'll use that as a reduction. There's the understanding that later in the regular board meeting, where the board is reviewing an amendment by our special education contractor, which potentially would result in future credits on that contract work. The regular education contract is a year-to-year contract at this point, negotiated every year. And the board approved the contract earlier this year. That was a 10% increase, which is a very significant number. But when compared to our peers and looking at other route rates, we're actually in a favorable position. So it's sensible to see that. After the first year, we look at about a 7.5% transportation increase, which is a large number. But we are aware that many transportation companies are having significant financial issues. They're going to have significant issues bringing staff back in the fall, and that's going to impact everybody on future contract negotiations. With special ed, we are locked in with SECRAN through the end of the 21-22 school year with 3% annual increases. And then we're applying that 7.5% thereafter. For the operation and maintenance fund, we did apply a 3% increase, but with some selective reductions. Obviously, with our capital improvement work, we're going to reduce some of the capital, internal capital projects that we're going to be doing to offset that. For the capital projects fund, the numbers that are given there are essentially what we've talked about with the B and G committee. It is a carryover from last year's, with the exception of that when we had this meeting last year with the budget committee, we had not yet finalized the full scope of the summer 2020 work and had not included the addition on the early learning center, which is about $5 million worth of scope. So what we've done is we've carried that out through fiscal year 25, which includes the summer 2024 work. And we booked at about $5.6 million total. That includes construction manager and architect costs. As the board is aware, we've, for the last, goodness, I think it was about 16 months, we've been working with Leggett and our curriculum department to develop essentially the classroom of the future for our students. And a lot of it has to do with the furniture and equipment in those rooms. We're happy to report that the orders were placed for the Indian Trail Junior High gen ed classrooms, and they're expected to be delivered later this summer for our students to, students and staff to utilize in the upcoming school year. Looking at preliminary figures based on some of the selections made by the elementary furniture committee, we're looking at a three-year phased rollout of that furniture, starting in summer of 2021, and then for the next two summers thereafter. So that would be the '22, '23, and '24 fiscal years. One thing I do want to mention is that when we look at these renovation figures, these are significant numbers. And really, the only number that is set in stone right now is our summer 2020. As you can see, looking around our buildings, anytime you drive by, there's significant work going on. Those contracts, those bids were put out, contracts signed, and that work will be completed. The 2021 and beyond are all flexible, and that's by design. So that if the unforeseen hit to our revenue that we're potentially seeing with this crisis, we can make adjustments to ensure that our operating budget maintain, is maintained in a sensible manner. So I've done for the committee is I've provided three separate projections. So these are typical format that you see from us. The first is a chart, kind of a graphical look at it, and you can see the fund balance depleting over time. And then the second shows the actual dollars that back up those charts. The first of the three scenarios is exactly as I just stated to the board, including all capital projects throughout that period of time, with that ending fund balance down at the bottom right in fiscal year 25 of just over $11 million. The second assumption has us completing the summer 2021 work as of the current scope, and then reducing future projects to $2.25 million. And that's a total cost that includes the professional fees from both the construction manager. Pardon me? So that's the second assumption there. And then the third that we've provided is completing the summer 2021 work, which is currently in the design phase, and then foregoing any future capital work outside of what we typically do in the operations and maintenance fund. And that shows you that five-year trend. So we've got three varying, and these aren't the only three paths that the school district can take. But my thought was that we've got a very conservative, kind of a mid-range, and then business as usual, at least from expenditure standpoint. As we know, there's been significant changes to the revenue since this long-range plan was adopted. So with that, I welcome any questions the board may have.
I have more comment than anything else. As Mr. Daniels alluded to, with the uncertainty from the state right now on future funding, that could translate into property tax as well, too. I think we have to really stay on top of this because I cannot accept having our fund balances by the year 2024 at the level that we're projected right now. I think that would put us in jeopardy and also put us in a position where we would have to be borrowing money at some point in time just to keep going. And I'm not saying make the adjustment now, and I think we have to work very closely with the B and G committee on this and some of these things we're doing. That's just my personal opinion on this. But right after that, you know, obviously, things are different when we look at in previous budget presentations because we did quite a lot of work into this summer. And on top of it, with the evidence-based model, we were anticipating a certain amount of money. And, you know, like me and I was involved in, we're putting away our tier two money. So anyway, that's my personal opinion.
Yeah, that's a basic point. And in terms of, let's just, let's go with capital project, started work, how committed are we? Like, a lot of capital projects is in progression. So how committed are we in terms of, okay, wrap up this, we're looking at 11 million, we've committed to that. But in terms of the progression of our work, I mean, at what point can we say, okay, we're going to take a pause? You know, can we do that after this summer? I mean, again, we're installing maybe one thing, the next year, we're going to install the second part of that. I guess, I mean, I know the second one might sound crazy, but you mentioned it. You can't have negative CPI in terms of affecting property tax. So they can't say next year the CPI is minus a half, and then our property tax revenue drops, can it?
You've never seen it before. We've been talking about it, you know, and in 2008, we didn't see it. But, you know, that's something that hasn't been addressed. I don't think the law would provide for that.
Yeah, because I mean, that, I mean, mentioned, and I thought about it, if that were to happen, that would go backwards. So by my figures, I think we're basically looking at a 4% increase of our budget each year of the budget going into next year, which is already, already off the curve. And if we're looking at some flat lines over the years, I really agree with Dave where, I'm not saying that we want to make capital improvements, but, you know, our salary is 7% of our budget. It's 80% with benefits. I mean, so even if we start stopping the grid and water, you know, the majority of the school district is still people. And, you know, I think we have to start thinking, so we don't have to, well, make hard decisions. In 2008, there was some tough decision. There's still a lot of bankers that don't like John Dinkle, so I just, I mean, we got a.
Had nothing to do with that.
I know, I got it.
No, so, yeah.
Really good statement, and that's where I bring up to where we pause some of the capital projects. Not saying we won't do them, but there's so much uncertainty. That's, that's what my question is.
Well, certainly, we have to finish this summer. That goes without saying. The board approved the contracts with ICI and Leggett for 2021. So that work will go on.
No, that's the part of the 11, that's contract.
That's, no.
That would be the next.
That would be the next year.
That would be the final.
Correct, right now. Now, the question is, as things develop between now and really say the time we bring a final budget to the board in September, we have to, the budget committee has to have discussions, the B and G committee has to have discussions, and we have the ability to significantly reduce that scope.
We have some contracts. What about the furniture? Each year, we're looking at close to, each year.
There is no formal commitment on the purpose of that. Again, it's part of the good news of our strategy is that we aren't in a position where we don't have things to cut. We always knew all along that the capital projects would come out of fund balance and that we'd be able to shut the faucet off for like a better turn. Correct.
That's why we've done the things we've done in the budget.
Correct.
We save, we have a fund bill for rating things like this.
And you. Correct, and you alluded to really one of the biggest factors. I mean, you know, when you engage in looking at a collective bargaining agreement, you have CPI to look at. That's our main source of revenue. And so that's going to be one of the keys. Yeah, we can cut 5.6 million in capital projects out.
You have a 1.5, 1.52. I mean, that's, that's 5% over three years. Realistically, if history plays out, that, that's, I think that's still a little high, don't you? I mean, after 2008, it was like 0.8, 0.81. I mean, we, there was a, you get what I mean. A little high.
Well, we're going to have July and August worth of CPI figures before we set a final budget. And that's going to be critical to see how quickly, you know, the economy does recover in that respect. But what's going to be critical for the budget committee and for the board as a whole is to really keep an eye on the operational budget. You know, the capital budget is kind of its own entity, and it's being funded from operational fund balance. The concern becomes if the conservative revenue that we've got plays out, then you are correct, in a couple of years, we're going to look at cutting some operational costs because we don't have any control over that revenue. You know, we're kind of at that mercy. So while it's nice that we have the ability to reduce, we have, we have the ability to remove that, as you said, you know, almost $1 million a year in furniture, over $5.5 million in capital projects. There's a, there's a point here in the next couple of years, depending on. Uh, there's a, there's a point here in the next couple of years, depending on um how long we stay down in terms of CPI, that the board's gonna ha- have to make decisions on operationally, what does that mean? And I can't say what that is right now because, again, we have that luxury of the buffer of that fund balance. Um, but it it certainly is not going to allow us to continue to invest in the facilities at the rate we are unless there's some significant
Well, I thank you for putting the three proposed, I mean, just seeing the difference with without the capital, I mean, it's like Dave said, it's it it's shocking, there's a huge difference. Huge.
And the third proposal still includes all of the furniture, you know. So again, that is a capital expenditure that could, we could forego, we could push that down the road a little bit. What's gonna be kind of nerve-wracking for everybody in the organization is if we have to start looking at making operational cuts.
The teacher contract was three years, four years, four years. It's four years, so we have three more years after four percent per year, so that's another twelve percent increase on top.
Woo-hoo.
Great. Are there any additional questions?
I have.
Right. Um, very long, as the motion to adjourn, the United States made twenty-seven uh budget meeting. Second.
Biggest number ever.
Okay, at this point, uh, we will be moving into our uh regular board meeting. I would like to call the May point seven, two thousand and twenty meeting of the Board of Education Board. Secretary to the Board, please call the role.
Miranda.
Here.
Yes.
Lang.
Here.
Towns.
Here.
Williams.
Here.
This is Hayne. Will you please lead the audience in the plane?
I pledge allegiance to the plan of the United States of America and to the republic of which stands of it. By God, in this call, liberty and justice for all.
Is there a motion to approve the minutes of the second meeting, maybe twenty-nine, two thousand and twenty, as presented?
So moved.
Motion by Serge, second by Jim, questions or discussion? Ball, please.
Daniel?
Yes.
Brandon Brockin?
Yes.
Lang. Ruffalo?
Yes.
Towns. Williams.
Yes, motion approved. Is there a motion to approve the accounts payable for the month of May, two thousand and twenty, as follows? Educated on one million, four hundred and forty-two thousand, one hundred and seventy-seven dollars and thirty-nine cents. Operations and maintenance, two hundred and sixty-six thousand, five hundred and eighty dollars and ninety-seven cents. Debt funds, zero. Transportation, twenty thousand, seven hundred and thirty-two dollars and thirty-seven cents. Need us for retirement, social security, eighty-eight thousand, forty-two dollars, eighty-six cents. Capital projects fund, two million, one hundred and four thousand, three hundred dollars and twenty-one cents. Working cash, zero. Student activity, one thousand, three hundred and fifty-one dollars and seventy-six cents, for a total of three million, nine hundred and twenty-three thousand, one hundred and eighty-five dollars and fifty-six cents. Okay, a motion, please? Motion by John, second by Jeremiah. Questions or discussion?
Oh. It was answered. I was just, I reached out to John about um some speakers that we had and their use and curious.
Well, can I?
Yeah, I'll expand. There was a speaker, Wesley. Um, it was something that had already been scheduled, so they switched it, so it was like a Zoom-type thing for the parents and and I thought it was odd being the fact that we're in remote learning, how we we would have something like that, and I was curious.
It worked out very well.
Was it a speaker that was already gonna come to the school or?
It was. They had already scheduled him for this year. Ardmore School has used them twice, in fact, used them once earlier this year. And uh, so they still kept a contract with him, but it's expanded over the whole month of May. And it started earlier than May and uh is ending up, I believe, this week, and then there's gonna be a follow-up session with parents.
When they didn't ask that the individual actually come to the school?
Yes, yes, yep. Yeah, and they had, I don't remember the exact number, I had emailed that out when I responded to Mr. Daniels. It was well over a hundred participants.
Now, in that situation, we did multiple schools, just out of curiosity, is there any way, if it's a speaker, we could do a contract for multiple schools or ways Zoom learning work, maybe he does one meeting and we invite all the parents to different schools?
So we, we did do that in combination with our um neighbors in District forty-five, District forty-eight, and District eighty-eight. When we had that clinical psychologist do that session last month, that was very successful. Um, we are planning another one. In fact, Dr. Loce is working with, um, and I don't remember her name from District forty-eight, to put on another session. Um, so those are across school districts. I don't know if they were, if the first one was.
I don't like to tape it because then you don't really have to pay for future, future meetings.
One from Wesley is taped. I don't know if the one that we did across all the school districts, I don't know if that one was taped or not. The one that we sat in on, yeah. I'm not sure if it was or not. No, I'm talking about if it was recorded while it was going on, so it's available for future viewing. I don't know. Yes, it is. Yep.
Any other council questions? Ball, please.
Yes.
Yes.
Towns.
Yes.
Williams.
Yes.
Yes.
Motion approved. Is there a motion to approve the payroll for the month, April twenty twenty, as follows? Education fund, two million, four hundred and sixty-five thousand, two hundred and fifty-nine dollars and ninety-five cents. Building fund, forty-seven thousand, eighty-seven dollars and eighty-four cents. Transportation, four thousand, two hundred and ninety-one dollars and seventy-four cents, for a total of two million, five hundred and sixteen thousand, six hundred and thirty-nine dollars and fifty-three cents. Motion, please?
So moved.
By John, second by Serge. Questions or discussion? Ball, please.
Lang. Ruffalo?
Yes.
Towns.
Yes.
Yes.
Yes. Yes.
Motion approved. I have not received any blue cards on agenda items. Um, regarding the committee reports, there was a land meeting on May fifteenth, uh, two thousand and twenty. Um, that was a Zoom meeting. Um, I was represented, I was speaking with Landline, and Mr. Peering. Uh, I believe it was about fifty-five people that were involved in it, superintendents, obviously important members from DuPage County. A majority of our meeting, well, not majority, a big part of the meeting was talking about the evidence-based model funding. Disappearing, I guess you could say, especially for tier-two, which we are tier-two. And then the rest of the meeting was a bunch of, uh, I call them what-ifs because we don't know what's happening from the state, we don't know when the schools are gonna open up. They said, well, what about this, what about this? And it was a good dialogue from all the superintendents because uh different people had different questions and different perspective on things. Um, I don't know, uh, John, do you want to add anything?
I think you described it well, that there are a lot of what-ifs that were discussed. The good news is now that the state um has progressed with the state's budget, our next meeting, which is gonna be scheduled, it's gonna be a planning meeting in early June, I think that will be much more productive. Um, I also want to comment, um, Mr. Williams was recognized for his longstanding service to the Land Organization and and congratulated and thanked, so I also want to express my appreciation today for serving.
How many years has he been involved in?
I've been involved, uh, eighty.
Eighty, I can't remember.
Actually, I was one of the original members because land used to be a uh part of the Illinois Association of School Boards, and I was on that when we pulled off. That was when I was on the high school board.
Back in.
Long time. And then I've been on the executive board for about twelve years, I believe. Nine, one.
Congrats, Dan.
Absolutely. You represented our district while in DuPage County.
Thank you. Um, and then obviously, our other um committee report was twenty, which we just had, so I don't know necessarily to report on that. Um, we're down to administrative reports.
Yes, sir. So I apologize in advance for the length of my report, but there's a lot to uh give you an update on and give our community an update on. First and foremost, I want to recognize and thank everybody in our school district community who contributed to our remote learning program over the last few months. Uh, I have mentioned to our board members uh prior to tonight that this whole experience has been very challenging and has been very consistent for our children. Uh, some children have done well with it, other children have not. But I still think we should commend the efforts of many of our parents, many of our teachers, many of our administrators, uh, many of our support staff who have contributed because we really did put a full effort into it, especially when you consider that it was kind of done at the last minute because it came account, came upon us in such a quick fashion. So even school districts who had learning plans on file with the state, which there were only a few in DuPage County, those school districts still literally had to reinvent how to teach kids remotely. And I I've said it before, but I'm gonna continue saying it, I'm very proud of the effort that we put in, but we have a long way to go, and I'm gonna talk a little bit more about that in a second. I also want to congratulate our eighth graders and express my apology to them, although it was beyond all of our control. I think it's just awful that our eighth graders, our seniors in high school, our seniors in college, anybody who's finishing up an experience in an institution or in a school or an organization and moving on to end in this fashion, it's just really a shame. So we're gonna miss our eighth graders, we're we're really proud of them and the work that they did, and we're gonna do everything we can to support their transition to Addison Trail High School next year, and uh we will see them again, that's for sure. Um, so the end of the school year is this week, and it's bringing upon a whole lot of effort to uh reconnect kids with their personal belongings that were left in desks and lockers and um uh cobra racks and there's, there was a lot of stuff that was left in our schools back uh around, what was that, Friday, March thirteenth, I believe, uh, was the last day that they were in school. And so this week, Indian Trail started the process, as you can see outside the doorway here, hopefully you didn't trip on any of our student belongings in the hallway. But all we, this weekend, Indian Trails reconnecting our eighth graders, and then it's gonna be our sixth, seventh graders and sixth graders with all of their stuff. And then in two weeks, our elementary schools start the same process. So our principals have been providing very clear communication to our parents to make sure that they understand the process. It's done in a controlled fashion where everybody's wearing uh masks and we're keeping social, respecting social distancing and making sure that we make it as efficient as possible. Um, the other thing that I wanted to mention to you, and I know our B and G committee was updated on this, all of our classrooms are packed. So our teachers did come in during the month of May in a controlled arena and packed up their classrooms um so that we can get our summer work completed in our facilities. So thank you to everybody who contributed to that, and it wasn't just one person, it was a a team effort across the board. So what do we have next? We have a lot of planning to do. And as is uh revealed in the first item in my report, two uh twenty twenty twenty-one planning, um, this is very similar to a communication that's gonna be going out to all of our parents this Friday morning. It's gonna be kind of an end-of-the-year um uh note from me, along with giving them an idea of what we have in store and what we're looking at. So I'm gonna kind of cut to the chase and and recognize that Friday, we're gonna be entering phase three of the governor's five-phase plan for restoring Illinois, but what we don't know is when phase four is gonna come upon us or when the opportunity for phase five, and really the difference between phase four and phase five for schools is phase four means schools are gonna be able to open up again, but in a limited fashion, and that's what I'm gonna explain in a second. But then faith, phase five basically means there's a vaccine that everybody can go back to normal, and we don't know when that's gonna happen. I will tell you flat out, our goal in Addison School District Four is to get our students back in school, in-person learning as soon as possible. That's our goal. So what we do know is that there is three possible options. The first one is the one that we're hoping for is gonna be full in-person learning. Um, if we are able to accomplish that, that's going to be with some controls and some accommodations so that we make sure that we keep our kids and our employees safe. Um, we won't know that until we get deeper into the summer. Uh, the second option is what we call a hybrid model, and if I was gonna be a betting man, I would probably say that's probably the more likely situation, but we don't know. Um, and the hybrid model is gonna be uh where we either split kids into groups and have them come in person for a portion of the week or certain days or certain weeks, and there's lots of different options that are possible. Um, and then the other times when they're not in school, they would be doing remote learning. And then, of course, the worst option, which none of us prefer, is a full remote learning to start the school year. Um, I promise you, our Board of Education and our children in the community, again, my goal is to get our kids back in school in person so they can re-establish relationships, start engaging in real learning activities that are gonna help them grow and be prepared for the next steps. Um, that was an oversimplification of both three plans. I will tell you that my leadership team is meeting in June. We have a whole week blocked out where all of us are gonna be working on the intricacies of each of these plans so that when we are able to make those decisions, we will be prepared. Um, what we don't know, of course, is what the timeline's gonna be, but I guarantee you, we will be uh prepared. Um, one of the barriers that we have, Serge, did you have a question?
And just because I think we should consider an option four.
Okay, what's that?
My, my thought, it's just coming from me, but I think these kids really need to be in a classroom. So if this phase five coming from the state, somehow, let's say they determine it's gonna be, you know, I don't know, October, why don't we start considering pushing the start of the school year back instead of remote learning? We need to get these kids back in the classroom. And I think we should at least have that discussion, at least as an option four, because it's just gonna, it's just too important for these kids to be in the classroom, learning, um obviously, remote learning is doing something, but uh we we know that this isn't what they need and they deserve, and if that means start a little late next fall and then go in a little later into the summer, I think that we owe it to the kids, and we can consider, you know, cutting, cutting some of those days off and making them, making them up for classroom time. But that's just me. Uh, but I really think, limiting it to three, knowing that there is a phase five or there better be a phase five soon enough, we should at least be ready to say, listen, if you think phase five, phase five, end of September, why not just push back to the year?
That makes sense to me, i- if we were able to get that information soon enough, and I, the timing on it is is
Why can't we be proactive and contact you and push it back anyway?
I will tell you that I do not believe that our union will be a barrier in any way. Uh, we have had really
So we're starting after Labor Day now for the construction.
Correct. September first was the first day of school, which is to our benefit, if you think about the timing.
We were to look at vacation days during the school year, holidays, some of those Mondays, institute days.
Yep.
Uh, uh, I mean, we, we could potentially now, by the next meeting, push the school year back to September twenty-second. That's still two, three weeks.
We could make that decision, Mr. Daniels, in August as a Board of Education.
Said that because you don't know what the future has, that you you don't know, but I'm, that's why I'm asking.
Correct. I believe that the three options that we're studying literally across the state, this isn't unique to Addison School District Four, are going to have to have accommodations based on the circumstances, and I agree fully with Mr. Ruffalo's um uh suggestion that if we found out that phase five is in the near future and we're gonna push back the start of the school year, I would not hesitate to support that and recommend that to the board.
But even if we push the school year back, and we start in stage two with the hybrid, it means less hybrid.
Yeah.
Because eventually, you you hope for a change and get to phase five.
Correct.
I mean, we're not gonna be in phase five, I mean, by then, anyway.
Yeah, and we don't know. Mike, I I will tell you, my biggest concern, and I have been um the the most vocal superintendent probably in Illinois regarding the issues that any of these options other than full in-person learning will cause our families. Because I I am really concerned for our parents who need to go back to work, and once society starts opening up and they can go back to work, the last thing our parents want to hear is that we're doing remote learning, or we're doing a hybrid model, or my kid can't go to school five days a week. What are they gonna do with their kids when they have to go to work? That's my biggest concern. And I think it's legitimate. All of my peers agree with that. But I'll be honest with my board, everyone's conveniently forgetting about that. Every conversation, before that conversation ends, I bring up and my peers start smiling because they know what I'm gonna say. We cannot forget about our parents who have to have a place for their kids. So I encouraged Lend, I've encouraged the ROE, I've encouraged the Health Department to keep... Without a doubt. And it does impact our staff because they have their own kids too. Yeah.
Can we start the conversations with the union now about pushing the school year back?
We definitely can. Absolutely. And I think it's a good conversation to have. I really, and I would even ask Donna, Kuzdonna, and some of our other administrators have met weekly with our union regarding...
I'm gonna say this to be a teacher. I'm a teacher. Sometimes, yeah, you don't think it's gonna be a problem. It comes to that moment, and then it's like, what can we get out of this? I'm not saying in a bad way, in any way toward union, trying to, I'm just saying that I'd rather start the discussions now and have them in the process so we know if there are hurdles than wait till August and be surprised by... I'm just saying that. Again, I'm not saying there will be hurdles. But I'd rather have the plan in place and say, like Serge said, October 1st, we know what you're like, and that is Phase Four. That's all I can say.
So would we then potentially still have the same end of school and we just chop off days to make it this...
That's a decision the board would have to make.
Well, there are minimum days. How many days?
We have to have students in session 176 days.
Catholic schools, like 120, right?
So there's no requirement for Catholic schools. So but the start date and the end date fully applies with the local Board of Education. We do have to have 176 days of instruction. And we would most likely have remote learning days, if there were remote learning days, contest days of instruction. It's not guaranteed yet, but they're saying that that's very likely. So any other questions regarding planning for next year?
Well, would we be able to adjust our Christmas break, our spring break, instead of having a full week of spring break, do like... I'm just saying, that would be days.
All of it is possible. I agree with your suggestion that we should talk with the union about it to make sure that they are supportive of that flexibility. But again, I'll restate, that's the Board of Education's decision on the school calendar. And even if we approve the calendar, which we have, and we submit it to the state, you can always amend it.
I didn't, that's good to know. I didn't know. So we go to 300?
The other thing that I want to inform you about is our team, our administrator team, met with a representative of the Regional Office of Education, Dr. Avette Dubiel, back in February to learn more about equity and looking at our schools through an equity lens. I believe that this is something that we should have as a priority for our school district. So we're making sure that children and staff understand the importance of accepting others, treating people with respect. And it has to be part of the culture. So I have asked Dr. Dubiel to do a short presentation to the board to help kind of guide this because I do think that you're an important part of the support of this. These efforts, if we decide to go forward or move forward with what's called an equity audit, will give us an assessment of our school district and our practices so that we can grow and learn. So I wanted to give you some advance notice about this. Dr. Kerry Cartman and I did review the presentation that Dr. Dubiel would go through with you. And I'm looking forward to it. I think it's gonna be informative for you and for our community. And then we did have one freedom of information request, and that was included in a weekly update earlier in May. Any questions? Thank you.
Absolutely. Wanna provide a very brief update on the facilities. Later in the discussion, we'll look at some photos from the construction. I'll provide a brief verbal update at that point as well. But certainly, our internal facility staff, led by Mr. Dirk, are preparing for whatever version of school may await us in the fall. This includes attending learning sessions, seminars, and doing research, collaborating with ABM or custodial contractor as well to develop procedures to ensure that we meet the expectations that are put out there for, again, whatever version that looks like. In addition, they got a little bit of a head start on some summer work in terms of doing preventive maintenance. They've been tasked by the Buildings and Grounds Committee to develop a comprehensive accounting of all of our major systems along with a strategy for doing ongoing preventive maintenance and staying on top of that. So that's in progress, and we're excited for them to kind of have unfettered access to the buildings and get this important work done so that when we resume, whatever form of normalcy we have, the facilities are ready. Again, for construction, I'll just echo that, you know, we are slightly... The construction manager at ICI didn't like to hear us say we're ahead, but certainly the weather and the lack of occupants in the buildings have put us in a favorable position to meet our August deadlines for final completion. And then our 2019 construction is finally nearing an end with the completion of the exterior signs. Some minor punchless work. We had a call this morning with them. And certainly, our hope is that we're making our final payment at the next board meeting to close that out and be done with those folks. We're all motivated to get that done. We're really pleased with the outcome. Appreciate the patience and support of the community and the Board of Education. Our employee benefits, open enrollment. This is the first time we did that completely virtually, and it was a success. We certainly thank Gallagher and the EBC Insurance Cooperative for their assistance. Every year, we hold an in-person kind of Q and A, and we have laptops for staff to do their enrollment electronically with Ms. Callow from the business office, as well as the EBC reps. Looked a lot different this year, but had the same impact. We had a very positive experience with that and did not have too many phone calls to make on the last day of open enrollment. And I have yet to hear of anyone that missed the boat this year, which is a nice change from years past. And then, last but not least, I'm sorry, one more time? Yeah, yeah, you know, it's interesting because it is a benefit. And, you know, I feel like we're selling something because there are just so many phone calls. And even Mr. Langton gets on the horn and calls a few folks that we see. And we monitor it up to the last hours of the enrollment. And, you know, even the last weekend, even though the enrollment has been, you know, advertised for weeks and weeks on then, we still get calls, wait, what's my password, et cetera. So, you know, we roll with it. And we know that everyone, especially this year, has so much going on in their lives that they haven't had to contend with in years past. And so we're pleased that that went fairly smoothly. Yep, thank you. And then last but not least is our meal distribution. Again, something we've never done before. And, you know, it's like building a ship while you're out at sea. And Gina Grabowski and our friends from Arbor did a phenomenal job. Later in this meeting, if I can just riff a little bit, we're gonna look at an amendment for our bus contractor for special education. And from almost the moment that Governor Pritzker shut things down, we've had, you know, these open hands up from these billion-dollar corporations that transport our students every day. And, you know, they use the word partner a lot. And I just have to give a lot of props to Arbor. They're a small, local company. They've got roots here in the community. And, you know, not once have they said, hey, are you gonna pay us extra? Hey, how are you gonna help us out? We're losing profit. It's always been, how can we help more? How can we help more? Thanks to District 88 and Ed Hoster and their contractor Chartwells for partnering with us on that. And again, Gina Grabowski in our office has been here every day and working on that and making sure that the communications are in, you know, multiple languages. It's clear. And that we're, you know, that we're meeting the needs of our community. And so that's gonna continue into the summer with once-a-week distribution of five meals and certainly hope that our community continues to take advantage of that. And we are just so proud to support the community.
Correct. Chartwells and Arbor.
Yeah, even to the point where Mr. Hoster was able to secure some equipment from the food pantry. And we're installing it at Fullerton, and there's gonna be D88 staff doing distribution at Fullerton so that we're hitting all the geographical spots. So it is not perfect. And I know a couple of the Tuesdays, we've been handing food out. It's been rainy. But everyone's kind of, like I said, we cannot. That's one thing we can't. So...
So since March, when we started, or early April, when we started this, between District 88, District Four, District 45, and 48, the four school districts combined have delivered over 250,000 meals. Yeah, they're almost all running now. Yeah, and it's a breakfast and lunch daily for five days a week. And they pick it up, so they pick up 10 meals at once for the whole week. Yesterday, we delivered 20 meals because we're not gonna be open next week. So we gave them enough for this week and next week because the next week is we're gonna start up for the rest of the summer. So we took one week off to kind of rejuvenate things and give Arbor an opportunity and Chartwell's an opportunity to refocus through the whole summer. Correct. It's remarkable. Yeah, and I think we should also give a shout out to the Addison Food Pantry. They have done incredible work for this community. They've been really, I think, compared to other food pantries, they've risen above everybody in the DuPage area. Yeah, our community is very fortunate to have them.
John, are we tracking exactly how many of our District Four students are taking advantage of these lunches? Do we have any of that?
It's really hard because, you know, the guidance from the state of Illinois was we had to feed any child up until 18 years old. And so we agreed, through the work of Ed Hoster and Tim Keely, we agreed to that District Four was gonna man, be responsible for Indian Trail in Lincoln, those two distribution sites. And then Addison Trail or District 88 was doing sites at our other elementary schools, most of them, and Addison Trail High School. So what they're gonna do for the summer months is we're gonna pare that down to only two sites. We're gonna be responsible for Indian Trail, and District 88's gonna be responsible for Addison Trail. And I think they're considering one other...
Fullerton. So, yeah, but by nature, the summer meal program, which we've done in the past, certainly didn't have nearly the popularity of this year. By nature, that program is a community feeding program. So it's assumed that you're a resident of this community. No IDs are checked. It's not tied to a student ID like during the school year. And frankly, it's essentially those in need that come. The contractors track the number of meals, and then that flows through state reimbursement.
Thank you. And that concludes my report.
Questions for Mr. Keely?
Question. With all the rain that we've been having, has there been any major damage at any of our facilities?
No, nothing, nothing beyond what we typically see. Had a couple roof trains overflow. We're able to react pretty quickly to those. Certainly, our facility staff, when there's a big event, they're going and checking those buildings. We do have, obviously, second shift custodial on staff as well. But nothing, you know, aside from some of the insulation at the ELC Ardmore Construction Site, a couple pallets did float down the street. As funny as that does sound, obviously, we can laugh about it because there's no damage or loss or injury. No, we've been very fortunate, and the facilities have held.
Anything about potential issues over at Wesley School? That's my email.
I have not heard any follow-up from the village on that. The only thing we saw was that the one day when it started, the big field south between Fire's Cove and the school drained very quickly. They opened something up and it drained very quickly.
Well, my concern is this, I've seen this happen. I know these rains are supposedly, you know, this once in 10 years, once in 20 years. But this has happened a few times. And I know we've put a lot of money into the parking lot over at Wesley School. And I've seen that parking lot underwater at least four times in the last two years. And water does some major things to ashtray. So I think we just gotta kind of... I know we're used to it over there because it was built basically on a pond. But we really need to probably have cuts in conversation with others, the county and the village. And I know the village has been very active as far as responding to us. I know the community, I had a few members talk to me about it, that I pointed out, it's not even our property. But we definitely are concerned, obviously, for our neighbors and for ourselves because that water was right up to the door that first time. And then last Sunday, it was up pretty close to the door. And that's my only concern area because somebody else is contacting me about any of the other schools.
I will reach out to the village and get an update and ask them what can be done.
Our teachers speak out, they're remote learning with students. They're still continuing to push out daily appointments and providing that ongoing feedback that families have needed. We also continue to support, by providing, actually, we need, or like collaborating through internal supports, our research construction, and external support. So that's going well. Just wanted to make you aware that SLPs will... And then they will be available through a call-in option. You can access them beginning to learn. So that's next Wednesday. We also, in order to learn from this experience, we have a survey available for parents, teachers, and our parent educators just to provide feedback on our current processes that we have in place in regards to remote learning, offer suggestions for improvement. We definitely are taking a look at this information, the survey results, and keeping all this in mind because we need to better our processes for potential future need. Hopefully, we won't need it, but we will definitely keep all that into consideration. As Mr. Langton shared, to all these entities, we continue to make plans for what the fall will look like and hosted as we hear more from regarding their guidelines and what we can do. Make you aware that Indian Trail and its summers continue with their summer reading program, the one book, the one school, and the book chosen this year is Ghosts. So students are able to choose that title in English or Spanish. And this is really possible through our Title One funds. Our language, our Indian Trail are really looking forward to having conversations with students all about this book and doing some activities that are related. These books will be distributed during COVID drive. At elementary buildings, it's great for Indian Trail. That started today, right? This week? So they're getting, as they come through. As you're aware, over the course of this past school year, our math community, Rob, is piloting various math resources that align with learning standards. Here, they piloted three resources. They piloted Big Ideas, Envision, and Reveal Math. The team has determined that Big Ideas Math offers the whole resources for students in English and Spanish. It has an online platform that is friendly, offers a multitude of learning opportunities through videos and interactive work. So in addition, teachers can access these across grade levels. So students that are accelerated, they can move up. Students that need additional support, they can move down. And they include the six-year life digital information, our general education classes, our bilingual classes, our accelerated algebra, and some of our special education classes will be licensing resources. So later, the formal recommendation for the purchase of Big Ideas Math is the primary resource for Indian Trail students. That's all I have today.
Questions? Thank you very much.
Yes, sir. Our first action... Yes, sir, our first action item is the acceptance of resignation requests. So we have three individuals on this list. The first one is Christina DeVorecheck. Second one is Marissa Lantini. And the third one is Julie Perez. I recommend those threes, those three resignations as presented.
Is there a motion to accept the resignation request as presented? Motion by Sarah, by Jeremiah, questions or discussion? Roll call, please.
Free book?
Yes.
Williams?
Yes.
Daniels?
Yes. Yes.
Motion approved.
Our section, second action item is the approval of employment requests. We have two individuals, we recommend that Lillian Olivero, a dual-language teacher at Indian Trail. And Iris Velazquez, dual-language teacher at Army Trail, hired, are hired as presented.
Is there a motion to approve the employment request as presented? Motion by Jeremiah.
Second. Second.
Second by Zach, questions or discussion? Roll call, please.
Yes.
Williams?
Yes.
Daniels?
Yes. Yes.
Lane?
Yes, motion approved.
Our third action item is the approval of updated job description. So within your packet are two job descriptions, the old job description for the Director of Business and Employee Services. And then an updated one, which accurately reflects what the current person is doing. This is Millen Calik, who's retiring at the end of June. I recommend the job description as presented.
Is there a motion to approve the Director of Business and Employee Services job description as presented? Motion by Jeremiah, second by John, questions or discussion?
Yes. So this was posted already.
The position, yes, yeah, because we had a vacancy.
So I would like to.
Four people have written that. After the job description. And it's going to be the same for a long time. I thought it's somewhere in the job description, I can see it. There's room. Where else? Or with less? I mean, I know that Melba was out. She was out for. For anything. Of. See who adds on.
I, I can tell you that compared to school districts, other school districts, large, small, similar.
If I might compare it to the business world. In the business world, we have to do more with less, everywhere in the US now, other than, you know, government agencies and things like this. Or we can, especially where, you don't have to put anyone.
Probably just somewhere.
And.
Some of these.
Yeah.
A lot of these are one-day things and repetitive things.
But I also think, Mr. Townes, that a job description gives an overview, it's not a detail. So even Diane Genokas is retiring, when we hired her replacement. And I looked at that job description again and I made some revisions to it. It had more detail, but it still is not inclusive of everything that Diane does. And I don't think any job description possibly can. I can tell you, I can tell you with all honesty, that. Our entire district office team works very hard and they're efficient. And my fear is even if we hired a new person to replace Melba. Who doesn't have those experiences because she is so efficient, that that person is going to be overloaded. Because of the unique aspects of her job.
But Melba didn't have those experiences when she took over the job either.
She actually had professional business world experiences before we even hired her as a health clerk. Actually, I think they were, they were harder. She, she had very good experience when she came to us. Yeah, in, in my opinion, we already operate very lean, very lean. If we had fluff, it would be easy to cut.
On the education side. When Donna puts together recommendations, she's got educators and they.
Criminal job, criminal job. Taxpayers want. When. What position? If everyone has done more with less. Proving that. The possibility that you're right, and you're totally owed to ourselves and to taxpayers.
And I agree with you that we owe that to our taxpayers, which is why my entire career. And at the, especially at the district level, whether it was in Chuck's job or my current job. I have spent all of those years making reductions and efficiencies that have improved our bottom line. I'll remind the board that it was probably about ten years ago. We cut three million dollars out of our budget, and the only place that we increased after that point was in the teacher ranks. We didn't add administrators, we didn't add district office personnel, we didn't add in our facilities department, we didn't add in our technology department. Only in those licensed positions that have direct contact with kids have we made increases. In fact, in the business office, I, I'm not going to say the number, but I know we made reductions, it was either one or two. So. But technically. We definitely do, yes, we do. Yeah, which is why.
About this, if someone that has small business.
But my concern is we have a fifty million, roughly a fifty million dollar budget, we serve over five hundred employees. And obviously, we serve a lot of students. And one position, that efficiency could have a significant impact on our performance. And the work that Melba does involves, and you have the job description, critical components. It's kind of like, if you make a mistake with payroll, you've got big headaches. And, and I revealed to you that Mr. Keely and I did do a deep dive in automating payroll. And what we ended up getting an estimate from a company, it greatly exceeded what our personnel costs are for the, for those tasks. And they even said, of course, you still have to have somebody on staff to manage it. And that would be a challenge. So. I'm not sure where you want me to take this, because our intention certainly was to replace Melba. Not to replace Melba, and to go back to the drawing board. If we had fluff, I would have already recommended that. But I don't see where the fluff is, and I mean, I certainly could defer to Mr. Keely because it is his department. Mr. Warman and I did talk about that, and I'm sorry, he's not here tonight. And he said to me, he's like, where are we going to make cuts? We, John, we made cuts ten years ago. So.
And if I can also add, you know, that position is not, I mean, we talked about the business office, but, you know, the reality is that Melba serves two departments. She serves human resources and the, the business office, so. You know, there's, there's, it's a little bit more than just the business office. And certainly, I have no problem having a more extended conversation, but I do want to make that clear. As long as we're having the conversation that this, this doesn't just impact the business office, this doesn't impact personnel services as well.
You know, right now, we're waiting to hear what this. Action item is, and I would suggest that we possibly set up a, John, please review it. I mean, you're sitting there just basically debating Jim about it, and like you were thinking. Well, I would appreciate it if we would.
Uh, we will look at it, though. Yeah.
And I would say, yeah, a great job. Actually, the reason that I've served twenty years. Might not, I can't, I always.
Roll call, please.
Williams?
Yes.
Didn't we say we were table on it? I thought you said.
If all it is is the.
Okay, I apologize. Yes.
Yes.
Our fourth action item for this evening is the annual reappointment of the school treasurer and renewal of the treasurer's bond. So as is included in the action item from Mr. Keely, I am recommending that we continue, Mr. Keely as the school treasurer. And assign the treasurer's bond to him.
Is there a motion to approve the reappointment of Mr. Tim Keely as school treasurer and renew the treasurer's bond as presented?
So moved.
Motion by John, question, discussion? Roll call, please.
Daniels?
Yes. Yes.
Lane?
Yes.
Yes, motion approved.
Our fifth action item is the approval of the Special Education Transportation Contract Amendment, Mr. Keely.
Thank you, so I alluded to this earlier in the meeting, we discussed this at, I do believe, the March and April board meetings. That since the start of the crisis and the shutdown of in-person learning. The bus companies have been in dialogue with the administration. The administration in the board have been very clear with our vendors that any agreement or amendment to our existing agreement that we make. Has certain stipulations in it. The amendment before you is the amendment to an agreement that was approved by the board in March of twenty nineteen, it's a three-year agreement. And those stipulations not only include that Septran pay back the district any and all funds that the state does not reimburse through the categorical. Transportation reimbursement process. But also includes a stipulation that they provide us with a complete accounting of all. Funds that are remitted to them during the shutdown time, that, where they're not providing service, just to ensure that it is flowing to the intended. Places such as driver pay and, and getting ready for the upcoming school year. There will be a reconciliation no later than December thirty-first of twenty twenty, according to the agreement. Certainly, our hope is that there's some clarity well in advance of that. But without further ado, I do recommend that the board approve the amendment to the Special Education Contract for Transportation with Septran as presented.
Is there a motion to approve the Special Education Transportation Contract Amendment as presented?
So moved.
Motion by John, second by Jeremiah, questions or discussion? Roll call, please.
Yes.
Yes.
Williams?
Yes.
Yes.
Motion approved.
Our next action item is the approval of the purchase of math materials for our middle school. Mrs. Haney, could you review that, please?
Yes, yes, so, based on my report earlier this evening, we recommend that the Board of Education approve the purchase. For your contract, your ideas, math materials in grades six through eight. The cost of one hundred and ninety-nine thousand dollars, eight hundred and seventy, eight hundred and seventy-five to be paid. Installments, first installment of the point four dollars, will be paid using Title One funds. And this, that gets installed, seventy-five thousand, seventy-five thousand, seven hundred and seventy-five dollars. To be paid using fiscal year twenty-one local funds. These cost materials, digital imprint, and professional development for each of the six years of the contract. The six-year option is effective as the cost of a one-year contract is one hundred and thirty-four thousand, two hundred and eighty-eight dollars. We respectfully grant that for the Board of Education, authorize the administration to proceed with the purchase of Big Ideas. Indian Trail.
Is there a motion to approve the purchase of Big Ideas math resources for grades six, seven, and eight as presented?
Second.
By Jim, second by Zach, questions or discussion?
Great job. Six years.
Any other questions or comments? Roll call, please.
Lane?
Yes. Yes.
Yes. Yes.
Our seventh action item is the approval of the spin bike bid contract, Mr. Keely.
Thank you, the February twenty-sixth committee meeting, the Buildings and Grounds Committee, among other things, reviewed the need to replace our existing spin bikes. The timing of the replacement actually coincides with our summer construction in that area. So it will work out quite nicely to replace those bikes at the same time as the space is renovated and our students will return to. You know, new equipment and space. We put it out to public bid, the results are there in the document. The, the low bidder was Heartline Fitness, they are a dealer rep for Kaiser, that's a manufacturer. It's, it's actually the manufacturer of the spin bikes that we had one version ago. We actually happen to have one of those bikes still in service. Certainly a testament to the quality of those bikes is that, you know, that longevity that we're seeing there. So certainly in concert with Ms. Purse, the principal, and Mr. Wajda, the department chair of PE. Our team met with them, we, we talked about various options. Because we, we do know that this is a significant investment by the district, and we want to make sure we have the right item. Because our students are relying on this, and those are going to be used all day, every day, as the, the current space is. We did have several vendors approach us after the bid was published, seeking an allowance for an alternate product. I believe it was five different manufacturers. Mr. Wajda did some significant research on that, collaborated with other PE directors in the county. And in the end, we weren't comfortable with, with the quality, the warranty, et cetera, of any of those items. And therefore, we stuck with that Kaiser bike. So what I have before you is the recommendation for the purchase of forty-one Kaiser M three I spin bikes. And the trade-in of our existing forty Schwinn spin bikes with a total cost of sixty-three thousand, seven hundred and fifty dollars.
Is there a motion to approve the spin bike bid contract as presented?
So moved.
My job, second by Jeremiah, questions, discussion?
What's the warranty on these bikes, do you know offhand? Because I know when we had the M three I that we purchased in two thousand and seven, we had a three-year warranty. And I think those lasted. Seven years, these, I believe this last batch only lasted, oh, actually, it lasted nine years.
Four years.
Like four years.
The first, yeah, the first batch for the. The M three I Kaiser spin bikes. And this last batch, which I currently own a Schwinn, and I love my Schwinn, only lasted four years, so. I'm hoping, and I'm not hold you to it, but we get a similar warranty out of it. That's all. I'm sorry, I'm, I'm sorry.
Notice the difference, because it's not stated.
Kind of warranty we're getting out. I know.
So there's a, a ten-year structural warranty for Kaiser, and then there's a three-year on essentially movable parts. You know, one of the things we discussed with our B and G committee. In the winter was the fact that we do have this equipment, but we don't have necessarily a preventive maintenance schedule. We talked about that with, with a lot of things, whether it be our, our physical plant or our equipment. So we did bring in a third party to do some maintenance on our PE equipment. In fact, just recently, I don't want to get on a tangent with you too much, but all of our playgrounds were inspected by a third-party license. We now have the report, and now on a monthly basis, the facilities department is doing a physical check of all of them. This is essentially at the behest of our new property casualty insurance company, it's best practice, right? So, the good news is. So the good news is with these, even with that warranty, we are doing an annual preventive maintenance, uh, which I think is really going to do a lot, um, uh, for the longevity of those. The other reality is the physical space has increased in size. So we're going to have the same number of bikes in a much larger space. If you were in the old spin room, that last row of students were actually right up against the wall. So those, uh, bikes were really jammed in there. They're, you know, up against each other, et cetera. So anyway, um, that's the long story, uh, for a short answer, for a short question. We received one formal bid. As I mentioned, we had five vendors reach out, five different manufacturers asking to be included. And in the end, even though economically speaking, they were in the same ballpark, um, the quality just wasn't there. And, and one thing we learned from our last go around with this is, you know, the folks that are using this the most, the folks that are teaching in that area, we, we really have to let them. Give their expertise on it and, um, uh, they're very pleased with the Kaiser product.
We knew a board spin class in there maybe.
I got a question, Tim. Was, wasn't there, um, wasn't there some bikes recently, like maybe in last year that we replaced or did, or was, am I confusing something else?
We were in litigation a couple of years ago with, with the bike.
Is this the same room we're talking about here?
Yeah.
Okay. So we're replacing these bikes that are in this room.
Correct.
You are correct.
And we're aligning the replacement with the construction project because that room is being totally redone with the construction project.
You know, it's one of the challenges you have, um, with the, you know, a, a distribution model from manufacturer, uh, with athletic uniforms, we run into that as well. You know, we run into that with technology, you know, we have to actually make a formal request to the manufacturers. That nobody registers the deal, so to speak, so that, uh, it is a fair, uh, process. So we, we kind of took the same route as we do with our technology, um, where we, we do have a very good idea. The end user, the, the, in the case of technology, Mr. Kuko and his staff or, um, the technology committees, et cetera. They know what they're looking for, but we still put it out with generic specifications because to ensure that competition, um, we've got to have multiple, uh, vendors. And in this case, we were very clear from the get-go that we would consider alternatives and we had, we said five others that reached out. So, um, in our mind, from a procurement standpoint, um, Heartline Fitness was the only bidder on, on the Kaiser product. But they didn't know when they, uh, submitted their bid, whether they're the only bidder, um, for the district. Does that make sense?
Yeah.
And the last time we purchased the Kaiser bikes, there were three bidders. So who knows why the others didn't want to bid it. I have no idea.
Any other questions, comments or questions? Roll call, please.
Williams.
Yes.
Daniel.
Yes. Yes.
Motion approved.
Our eighth action item is the approval of the consolidated district plan for 2021. So as you know, the Illinois State Board of Education requires that all boards of education, uh, review and approve. The consolidated district plan in order to be eligible to receive federal title grant funds. So that plan as, uh, put together by Ms. Cartman is in your packet and I recommend it as presented.
Is there a motion to approve the consolidated district plan for 2021 as presented?
Second.
Motion by Jim, second by Surer, questions and discussion? Roll call, please.
Williams.
Yes. Yes. Yes.
Motion approved.
Our final action item for this evening is the waiver of the second reading and then approval of the board policy updates. So included in your packet, thank you to the policy committee for reviewing, uh, press plus issue number 103. And recommending the following policies be changed. So two, colon, one sixty and seven, colon, seventy are amended. There are no changes, uh, but updated, uh, legal references for four, colon, fifty, six, colon, two eighty, seven, colon, one thirty, seven, colon, three twenty-five. And eight, colon, eighty. Policy exhibits, two, colon, one twenty-five, exhibit one and five, colon, sixty, exhibit one are rewritten. And then additions to policies, two, colon, one twenty-five, five, colon, sixty, six, colon, one thirty-five, eight, colon, ten, eight, colon, thirty, and eight, colon, one-ten. And then there are legal requirement changes to two, colon, one twenty-five, five, colon, sixty, and eight, colon, thirty. And then there's also legal reference updates to five, colon, one fifty, five, colon, two eighty, six, colon, one thirty-five. I recommend all of these policy changes as presented by the policy committee are approved.
Is there a motion to waive the second reading and approve the board policy updates as presented?
So.
Second.
Motion by Surer, second by Jeremiah, questions or discussion? Roll call, please.
Williams.
Yes.
Daniel.
Yes. Yes.
Motion approved. We are now down to discussion items.
Yes, sir. Please remember that the next regularly scheduled meeting of the Board of Education is for Wednesday, June 26th, 2020. So that's a month from now. Please know that, um, just like this meeting, the Board of Education will make a decision about the time, location and format for that meeting based on the circumstances. Also, please, uh, remember that tomorrow night, our Indian Trail eighth graders, um, will be celebrated through the virtual promotional exercise. I did send a link to that, um, to all of our board members and all of our families of our eighth grade graduates have received that as well. And also please remember that the last day of school technically for students is this Friday, May 29th. And also that is the last day for our teachers. Then Mr. Warman asked that I share an enrollment update with you, and I'm actually going to read this. It's going to be simpler. Excuse me. He is pleased to announce that the online registration for 2021 school year has gone very well despite us not being in session. Although the early registration discount is over, we are still communicating with our families to have them complete the registration process for next year. As of today, we're excited to announce that the Early Learning Center has 77% of their students registered. Ardmore has 70%, Army Trail 64%, Fullerton 69%, Indian Trail 66%, Lake Park 93%, Lincoln 62% and Stone 76%. And then finally Wesley is right around 70%. I have to share with you that in all my years, um, that's probably the best position that we're in at this time of the year. I can't explain it, um, but that is good news. So again, our office staff will continue to reach out to families during the month of June to encourage assist them with registering. Uh, Mr. Warman does have meetings with our school secretaries. Um, certainly school registration is one of the topics that they review. And I know that they're meeting this next week to take the next steps. Uh, he also wanted to share the club activity summary for the year. So even though we were not in session for the last few months, he did get, um, all of our club activity sponsors to complete the update form. That's included in your packet. I would like to thank all of the staff who did contribute to those exciting activities and experiences for our children. Mr. Keely, would you want to go through the construction project updating pictures or talk about it a little bit?
Absolutely. Um, so as you see in your packet, uh, we did provide, um, we have ICI put the other kind of a, uh, pictorial look at what's happened in the last month. Each week, uh, we do provide a batch of photos to Ms. Janokas and she posts them to our website. So you're seeing, you know, quite a few pictures updated from each of the two sites. In addition, we have our, uh, live camera so that you can, um, check on it at any time. I actually went by there today, uh, and, um. You know, the Early Learning Center is progressing very nicely. They started putting, uh, the exterior brick and exterior stone up on the, um, would be the north side of the building. And they're going to work their way counterclockwise around towards the, um, towards, towards the existing entrance on that. So, um, the door, uh, frames did show up actually yesterday, interior door frames. So they're installing those. The rough plumbing is complete and the roof at the Ardmore addition, um, as of a couple of days ago. I say a couple of days ago because every day, um, they get a little bit further, but as of, uh, earlier this week, they're at 90% completion. Indian Trail, uh, the boardroom walls have been framed, uh, and rough electric is about 50% complete. Doug work has started and, uh, uh, they've started some demo for the exterior canopy work. It's really something to walk through that space. Uh, we were in there last week with Mr. Langton. And, uh, where there's about a group of, uh, eight of us all wearing our, you know, obviously our, our hard hats, our high visibility vests and our personal protective equipment. But there were, you know, like I said, there were seven or eight of us in that group and boy, it felt small. We knew we were in the existing boardroom, the walls were gone, but we knew the demarcation and then we were looking at what the new boardroom, um, would look like. And it's certainly, um, quite the expansion. So it's really exciting, um, as far as professional development and day-to-day use to have that, that much needed meeting, uh, space for our staff. And then obviously for our formal board meetings, um, and then, uh, obviously the, uh, the, the fax lab, the family consumer science lab is coming together. All that plumbing is in and, um, you know, it's just, it's something to watch this go from schematic to, to reality. And, um, it is unfortunate we're in the situation we're in. Otherwise, um, you know, we'd be showing it off to the board, um, more readily. Certainly hopefully next month before the board meeting, uh, we'll have a little bit more leeway in terms of social distancing. And perhaps we can take the board, um, through some of the spaces. At this point, again, as I said earlier in the meeting, um, ICI is not admitting to being anything but on schedule. But we're, we're very, um, pleased with where the project is at this point. There are a couple of long lead time items, um, such as windows, uh, that are, you know, kind of, um, getting bogged down in the manufacturing process. And so ICI has been very careful to document everything so that when it comes time for the Buildings and Grounds Committee to ask us. Why certain things are the way they are, we can, we know that things were ordered, you know, in January and February when they should have been. And there's some things out of their control, but we're still cautiously optimistic about those substantial completion dates so that the building can be delivered back to, um, uh, the students and staff of those buildings. Are there any questions, uh, about any of the work to date?
It's not a construction question, but did we, uh, select a provider for the classroom instead of being in the boardroom yet?
A supplier? Yes, yes. So that's already been accounted for. Um, yes, absolutely.
Does that tie in with the ones that you.
You know, I'm not really sure. You're talking about the ones that Dr. Lozey demoed, uh, off the field to Mr. Langton on that.
Yeah. And I, to be honest with you, I'm not sure what the manufacturers are the one are going to be in the boardroom. I can tell you that when we, after we had viewed those, and then we said, hey, it would be nice if they were all the same. I was told that those were already ordered and so I'm not sure if they're the same brand or not. I know that she did get one of the ones that's for piloting. She did get, it actually just came in this week.
Any other questions?
We have two other items under a discussion. The first one or the seventh discussion item is the annual Addison Medina Schreiner's Parade. Just wanted to formally let you know, if you hadn't already heard that, uh, even though it's at the end of August, the village canceled that event already. And then the other one, uh, the other event that's really up in the air is the joint annual conference and that takes place in November. So Carolyn and I are watching that closely just to see, uh, when registration opens up, et cetera. We do have, uh, one of our, uh, groups, our instructional specialists are going to be presenting at that conference. So hopefully even if they modify it or make it not in person, if it's virtual, hopefully we'll still be able to participate in some way. But I'll give you information once we know more. And that is all that we have, Mr. Williams.
Okay. I have received two blue cards this evening. The District Board of Education provides an opportunity on the Board General. And each open meeting or comments from the public can cause the board policy 2.230. In order to protect the rights of students, staff and individuals, any item of a sensitive nature should not be presented in public. But should be communicated in writing to the district compliant manager. Board policy 2.230 states that members of the public shall be permitted to account to the board at each open meeting. Ordinarily subject to the following time limitations. Thirty minutes overall, 15 minutes per topic, three minutes per speaker. Generally, the Board of Education does not engage in dialogue during the public comments. First, the blue card, um, Superintendent Langton will, uh, address that one.
I'd be happy to. So, uh, we were actually notified in advance by Casey, uh, by Suski, and I apologize Casey if I mispronounced your last name. She is a student, uh, student series manager for the Leukemia and Lymphoma Society. And she reached out to the board, uh, really to say thank you to all of our students and their hard work. Several of our staff have, uh, contributed to efforts to raise money for the Pennies for Patients program. Uh, so in front of each of you, Casey provided us with kind of an overview sheet. And I had also, uh, sent you some information earlier this week, um, that Casey afforded us. So I wanted to, I want to thank Casey for acknowledging the work, the hard work of our students. But she reminded us that our school district has donated over $78,000 to the, uh, Leukemia and Lymphoma Society mission, which is, uh, purely amazing, $78,000. Additionally, just this last fiscal year, we contributed $12,000. So, uh, I'm really proud of our students. Many of our staff members across different schools have contributed to this effort and our, you know, our hats off to them. So, thank you.
Thank you. Um, second blue card is, uh, from Tina Siskoff, the students at Stone and Indian Trail. It's in reference to, uh, the board policy on public participation 2.230, which I've read the majority of that, which is on the card. So I'll start with a comment, uh, that she has and then getting to the questions here. The comment is public participation has gone from a total allowance, 30-minute minimum to 30-minute maximum with a cap at 15 minutes per subject. Question, what happens when if more blue cards are collected than maximum time allowance? Will the board president be forced to extend the time to make sure all taxpayers are heard? If so, can the rule be modified to say that all collected cards will be addressed ignoring the time limits? It's at the board's discretion whether or not to, or at the board president's discretion whether to extend that time. And it would have to be strictly on whatever the situation was at the time. We don't anticipate that we'd be changing the board, uh, policy at this time. Policy will remain as is. And that pretty much answers those questions, I believe.
Mr. Williams, I have one thing that I wanted to just correct and I apologize for this error. I noticed that, um, under our next board meeting information, which was the first discussion item, I accidentally put in here that it's, uh, Wednesday, June 26th. It's actually Wednesday, June 24th, just so you know. That'll be, obviously we'll double check our website just to make sure that that's correct.
Is there any miscellaneous or unfinished business to bring before the board?